Yeah. Yeah. It's crazy.
Well, we do have that. Yeah. We have to make up the last. So you have to. I think they have.
Sorry.
So it was like.
That's the question. Yes. So you have. So you have. You have.
I'm. I saw that. I mean. It's not. And I don't fuck out. I just. I'll leave you questions.
Well, let me know.
What? Just some.
Oh, God. Yeah. This is. This is. Right. Yeah. Let me know. Okay. Yeah. We're. We third. Came up for that. So. For your. Hi. Yeah. Yeah. I've been up since. Couple of things. So. Wow. You can't. Yeah. 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 And it's like. Brown. And I have. And I have. It's. Yeah. Yeah. Information. I'm. 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 Yeah.
It's.
I'm. 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 Oh. Oh. Yeah. I did see. I did see. Yeah. 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 All right. No. How are you? Uh. All right. We have. Yeah. 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 Thanks. I should say. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh.
It's not. Yeah. 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 All right. Yeah. Sure. Okay. Yeah. 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 Cheers. I'm. Yeah. 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 She's on. I don't know. Yeah.
She. Australia. He's a penny in the koalas. He's better than. Yeah. 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 We brought him up. We were tired. Yeah. 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 I wouldn't have. I wouldn't have. Yeah.
Oh, it is. It's expensive. It's expensive. I did.
Yeah. I don't want to vote. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
That's fun.
Oh, yeah. Here's. What you. Thank you. Oh, it's. Yeah. My vote. Thursday. Ian Bieber. Yeah. Thursday. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I think we care.
Yeah.
But it's. Yeah. I wish. I wish. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I'm. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. Why can't I? So. So. I'm. So. Not. Okay. Like. Yeah. 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 I'm just. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. So. I'm. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah. Oh, really?
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't. Yeah. Yeah. Um. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We're. Competitions. Yeah. Yeah. She's. No. She always laugh. Yeah. 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 Oh. She's. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Good evening. The time being six thirty P. M. I'd like to call this meeting order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Potassi.
Here.
Councilmember Kettering.
Here.
And Mayor Barrios.
Here. Please note, all four of us are present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation provided by Henry Raven this year at Foothills Community Church.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor. Council. Father, we give thanks for the time that we take here at least twice a month to do the business of the city. God, I want to thank you for the privilege always of being able to invoke your blessing upon this meeting. Your word says that the city that you can't watch, the watchman walks in vain. But you use people, and we give thanks for the people that you've given us to watch over our city. We thank you for their commitment, their passion, and, God, their work ethics. We give thanks that we still live in a country that's free, never taking that for granted. So as the business of Oakdale is carried out this evening, Father, I want to ask your blessing, for it's in Christ's name that I do. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Henry. All right. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? City manager?
None.
All right. Next item is public comment. Now's the time for public comment. If you have an item that is not on the agenda, please come up to the mic. You will have three minutes. Please state your name. Okay. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. City Council consent agenda. Any council member like to pull an item to discuss? By the way, I like this new screen here. This is really nice. Takes a little bit to get used to, but thank you. Um, any council member have an item they'd like to pull to discuss? If not, this is an action item.
I'll move to approve.
I second that.
First and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kettering.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilmember Potassi.
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios.
Yes, this item passes four oh. Thank you, Colleen. All right. Next item is the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-five fire code adoption. We will first have a presentation by staff. After that, we will open the public hearing for a public comment. Good evening. That's a big binder right there. That's a big binder. Do we bring our sleeping bags or what?
This is just light reading for tonight. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, city staff, and members of the public. I appreciate the time to put, bring before you. Sorry, I had to. Uh, the introduction and wave of first reading of the ordinance amending chapter twelve of the Oakdale Municipal Code to adopt the twenty twenty-five fire code with local amendments and removing section seven dash two-two, automatic fire extinguishing systems from chapter seven, building code, administration enforcement, and system development changes. Uh, the matter before you tonight is the tri-annual adoption of the California Fire Code or the California Code of Regulations Title twenty-four. You would probably know that by twelve other binders that look like this. Excuse me. That are the building code. Uh, title, Title twenty-four, Part nine, is the California Fire Code, and that is incumbent upon us to adopt every three years. Uh, this is your opportunity to make the local amendments as I've put forth before you. Do you have any questions?
Right. Um, a public hearing is now open. It is now time to take public comment from anyone. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up to the mic and state your name. You will have three minutes to provide your public comment. Okay. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, now's the time to open up for city council discussion. Any council member have a question, comment, concern? Would a council member like to make a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve ten point one.
Second.
We have a first and a second roll call, please, Colleen.
Councilmember Kettering.
Yes.
Councilmember Potassi.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios.
Yes, this item passes four oh. Thank you very much.
Very well.
Thank you for your service, too.
Thank you.
All right. Eleven point one. Good evening.
Good evening. All right. So I'll be presenting eleven point one. Um, so, um, this is going to be a consideration to, uh, a resolution authorizing, uh, an airport hangar lease rate increase with a continuous annual, uh, consumer price increases for the city-owned T. hangars, uh, private-owned hangars, uh, which are land leases and tie-downs. Um, so background, uh, the city of Oakdale leases hangars, tie-downs, and land, uh, for private hangars at the Oakdale Municipal Airport. Um, rates vary by, uh, type, size, and use. Uh, the last rate increase was in April of twenty thirteen. Uh, staff now recommends, uh, updating the rates to reflect, uh, current market conditions and ensuring that the airport remains self-sufficient without general fund subsidies. Uh, since two thousand thirteen, the C. P. I. for the San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose area has increased about, uh, forty-five percent. Uh, staff recommends a eight percent, uh, rate increase for the city-owned and private hangars and twenty-five percent, um, increase for the tie-downs effective, um, the first of, uh, first of, uh, January twenty twenty-six, followed by an additional eight percent, uh, increase for hangars and ten percent for tie-downs, um, on the first of twenty twenty-seven. Um, the E. A. A. hangars would, uh, be set at a, um, uh, point zero three three eight cents per square foot, um, starting on the first of twenty twenty-six with the eight percent increase on the first of the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-seven. Um, beginning, um, twenty twenty-eight, um, the annual C. P. I. adjustments are recommended. Um, this is just a, uh, comparison to other, uh, airports in the area. Um, you can see even after the twenty twenty-seven, um, increases for the city-owned hangars, um, we are well below what other, um, airports are charging for, um, similar-sized hangars. Um, there's not a whole lot of data as far as the land lease hangars, so, um, that's where you can kind of see, um, we're just increasing by a penny per square foot each year approximately. Uh, but we're still on par with other airports that have, um, that have land leases. Uh, so, um, tie-downs, um, will be kind of just matching around others by the end of twenty twenty-seven. Um, this is the proposed rates. Um, currently, we charge a hundred eighty-five dollars for city hangars. Um, and, uh, with eighteen, about eighteen and a half cents for square foot. Um, private hangars, we have a minimum of sixty dollars, almost six cents square foot. The E. A. A. hangars, they just have a flat rate of a hundred and twenty dollars, and tie-downs are currently four, uh, forty dollars a month. Uh, so in twenty twenty-six, we'll be, uh, we would like to increase the, uh, T. hangars to a minimum of two hundred dollars a month with the twenty cents, uh, per square foot. Private hangars, minimum of sixty-five dollars a square foot, or sixty-five dollars a month and, um, almost seven dollars a square foot. E. A. hang, E. A. A. hangars would be, uh, um, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents at that, um, almost, or three cents a square foot. And then the tie-downs would be raised to fifty dollars a month. And then in twenty twenty-seven, we will, um, have the, uh, T. hangars increase up to two sixteen. The private hangars, uh, the minimum would be seventy dollars. The E. A. A. hangars would go up to the two fifty-eight, eighty, and tie-downs fifty-five dollars per month. Um, starting, uh, January first, twenty twenty-eight, um, rates will adjust, uh, adjust annually based on the, uh, consumer price index for the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose area capped at three percent per year. Uh, never negative, uh, unless, and unless, uh, ended by city council. Uh, commercial hangars, L. one through four, um, will remain, uh, the same, um, since they already have the C. P. I. adjustments as part of their leases. Um, the physical impact is, um, increasing the lease rates for private and city hangars will boost, uh, the aviation, uh, fund, six five seven, uh, revenue and help keep the airport self-sufficient, uh, without general fund support. Um, the update, uh, will also provide matching funds for federally funded projects and finance much-needed maintenance and improvements not covered by grants, uh, to ensure the airport remains safe, functional, and sustainable. Uh, so staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing an airport hangar lease rate increase with the continuous annual C. P. I., uh, consumer price index, increases for the city-owned T. hangars, private-owned hangar land leases, and tie-downs.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So the rate hasn't been increased since twenty thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
And the current tenants that we have out there, are they aware of this possibility?
I, I have, um, tenants meeting every two to three months. Um, and at the last one back in September, I, uh, brought this up with them and handed out all the, the new, uh, rates for the next couple of years.
Okay. Any, uh, excuse me. Any comments from the public? Come on up. State your name, please, and then I'll bring it back to council. Thank you. Good evening.
Hey. Good evening. Fred Smith.
Nice to see you here.
Yeah. Good to see you guys. Um, so I have hangar number seven. Um, I've had it for quite a while now. I think this rate increase is a good idea. Uh, not saying that I want to sit there and pay a bunch more money, but it, it really are, they're, they're great rates. And I, I had a hangar at Modesto for a little while, um, about three years ago. Comparatively, Modesto is still higher than us with smaller hangars. You really got to put some money forward if you want something that's compared to the city hangars. Uh, twenty-eight, when we start going to the three percent, are, is it going to come back to the council? Uh,
No. It'll be whatever the consumer price of that is.
Okay.
But no more than three percent and never negative.
Okay. Yeah. Because we, it's a real good rate. So even if it goes to two hundred, you know, two sixteen, two eighteen, it's still solid. Everybody's going to want to do that. Um, I would request that we've had a lot of good maintenance, and I know that you're responsible for a lot of that, so thank you so much for everything you've done, because that, that airport has gone so far and beyond in the last few years. Could we get on the city-owned hangars a little bit of the maintenance required with this rate in heat, uh, increase? When I say that, I mean like my hangar and a couple others down there. The doors are a little tweaked. They're kind of hard to close, you know? It looks like it's pretty easy if you had a ladder or something, you know, to get up there and just.
Just let me know. I can have someone else.
Okay.
Make sure you guys connect with your cellphone, so you can just reach out to him direct.
Yeah. That'd be great. Yeah, we'll do that.
Fred, you have my number, too. Call me.
Okay. Will do. But, yeah, I think this rate increase is a good idea, um, especially if it's going to continue the longevity of our airport. That's such a good airport that we have down there. I love that airport. I love the convenience of it. I love the fact that we have it. Everybody in Oakdale is really happy about it, too. I know some of the newer homes are a little annoyed with the noise, but it's been there a while, and, uh, it's a great airport, so I'm all for this rate increase.
Aye. Thank you.
Can I, can I just offer something? The, the C. P. I. is a maximum of three percent. So if our C. P. I. is one and a half percent, the maximum that we're going to increase that year is going to be one and a half percent. If the C. P. I. is five percent based on higher inflation, the maximum that we're going to increase is three percent. That's why we're capped at three percent.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments for this item? Okay. Public comment is now closed. Questions?
I was just going to ask how, how the people that were at the meeting with you received it. Everybody was good. Sounds like at least one of them.
Yeah. Um, I gave it to them, and I didn't have anyone, any pushback, um, on it. Um, I did, they, I let them know, you know, they all have my card and stuff, so they can reach out if they have any questions about it. Um, because I gave them quite a bit of information, because I gave them all of the other airports', um, prices and everything, and they didn't have, I'd never got any questions or any concerns about it, so.
My other question, Jerry answered. You guys are going to be basically following the standard of rate increase and fairness, all that stuff, so. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Just real quick, and I think I understood this correctly, is after twenty twenty-eight, when we go to C. P. I., if there needs to be an increase more in the C. P. I., that would need to come back to council. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, but that's not the way it's written. We're, we're anticipating that if C. P. I. is five percent, we're just going to do the standard three percent. And then the next year, if it's five percent, and we do the standard three percent, we're just going to leave it as is. Now, if it gets to the point where it appears that the, based on inflation, if it appears that the airport is not self-sustaining, then we would come back and ask for another increase at that time. But right now, as long as, as long as the C. P. I. is, is somewhat manageable, we don't intend to bring this back to council.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. I have no questions. I fully understand. I motion to approve item eleven dot one.
Second.
First and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilmember Potassi.
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering.
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios.
Yes, this item passes four oh. Thank you. All right. Eleven point two.
Mayor, council, thank you for having me here today. This presentation is on a city-generated, non-exclusive, non-consensual franchise towing services agreement. Uh, consideration of a resolution authorizing acceptance of new applications or renewals of current applications for city-generated, non-exclusive, non-consensual franchise towing services agreement and authorizing the chief of police to contract with qualified applicants. Uh, the towing services, uh, franchise agreement shall be set for five years. The city reserves the right to automatically renew their agreement. Either party may terminate the franchise agreement by giving the other party thirty days' written notice. The Oakdale Police Department has initiated the process of updating and renewing the city's non-exclusive, non-consensual franchise towing services agreement. Uh, the effort addresses the fact that this existing contract has been expired since two ele, uh, two thousand and eleven, and it was drafted in two thousand and eight. So the scope of services that this agreement would cover would be, uh, impound for investigations, evidence, asset, uh, vehicle forfeiture, vehicle collisions, stalled, illegally parked, driver incapacitated, uh, driver arrested. Uh, toes under California Vehicle Code or Oakdale City Code would be for thirty-day impounds, abandoned vehicles, inoperative abatement vehicles, removal from streets, alleys, highways, public, private property, uh, any, uh, tow ordered by authorized city or police personnel. Uh, preference and non-preference toes requested by Oakdale Police Department. Vehicles towed, uh, at the driver's or owner's request. Last staff presentation. Uh, the council raised concerns that proposed insurance and identification rates were too low. A review of Modesto Police Department, C. H. P., and prior, uh, expired contracts, uh, we, uh, last proposed were in fact set higher than comparable agencies. Additionally, our risk, uh, management authority sets the rates for our insurance and identification rates, or requirements. We decided to model our contract after the Modesto Police Department and the R. M. A. set our insurance rates. The council also raised concerns over C. H. P. rates. Uh, research, uh, research confirmed the C. H. P. rate is the average rate amongst, uh, their tow companies plus five percent. This is the expired contract. Uh, it had a one million workers' comp. Uh, general liability was a million. Auto was a million. Commercial was a million. Uninsured motorists was a legal minimum. Uh, for class coverage, it was fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. The garage liability was five hundred thousand. And the, uh, for the new requirements that were recommended by the risk, uh, the R. M. A., is for workers' comp, it was a million, so there's going to be no change. The general liability, uh, they requested it to also be a million per occurrence, but they also added a plus two million for aggregate. Uh, auto liability is not changed at a million. Commercial, business, and auto liability has been increased to two point five million combined for a single limit. Uninsured motorists is no change, it's set to a legal minimum. Hook, on-hook coverage has basically doubled for Class A, a hundred thousand, Class B, two hundred thousand, Class C, four hundred thousand, and that garage keeper's liability is the same on-hook coverage. For the old expired contract, uh, the, the fees are listed on the screen. I'll, I'll quickly go over them. For, uh, year one, it was a hundred fifty-five, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty-five. Year two was one seventy, two thirty-five, two sixty. Uh, from year three through five, it was actually set through the, the current C. H. P. rate. Now, our new maximum, uh, charges, uh, it's going to be for year one. It's going to be, uh, outside storage will be thirty dollars, inside thirty-five. Class B and C storage is forty. inside thirty-five, Class B and C storage is forty. Then year two would be outside would be forty-five, inside fifty, Class B and C fifty-five. Year three, oh, this, sorry, I apologize, this is from the original contract from two thousand and eleven. Years three through five are going to be the current CHP rate. This is our new maximum. This is for tow fees. Year one for twenty twenty-five, Class A would be two hundred and sixty, Class B would be four hundred and fifteen, Class C would be five hundred and eighty. For twenty twenty-six would be Class A was two hundred and sixty-five, Class B four hundred and twenty, Class C five hundred and ninety. Class C special equipment would be the CHP current rate. For year three, twenty twenty-seven, Class A would be two hundred and seventy, Class B would be four hundred and twenty-five. Our Class C would be four, or six hundred. For year four, the rates for Class A would be two hundred and seventy-five, four hundred and thirty, six hundred and ten. And year five for year twenty twenty-nine would be, Class A would be two hundred and eighty, Class B four hundred and thirty-five, and Class C six hundred and twenty. This is for the storage fees, the maximum they can charge. This is the new rates for year one of twenty twenty-five. Outside daily storage would be ninety dollars, inside would be ninety-five. Class B and C would be a hundred. After-hours gate fee would be a hundred. A year twenty twenty-six would be ninety-five, a hundred, a hundred and five. And then year three for twenty twenty-seven would be a hundred, a hundred and five, a hundred and ten. For year four, for outside would be a hundred and five, inside would be a hundred and ten. Class B and C a hundred and fifteen. For year five, outside daily storage fee would be a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen, and then a hundred and twenty. We've decided no franchise fee is going to be required for the city of Oakdale. The city of Oakdale will remove the franchise fee from our towing services agreement and offset this with our adjustment for our vehicle release fees. This action will result in no fiscal impact to the general fund. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution authorizing staff to allow acceptance of new applications or renewals of a city-generated, non-exclusive, non-consensual franchise towing services agreements, and authorizing the chief of police to contract with responsive and eligible applicants. This will ensure continued compliance and efficient towing operations with this, within the city, enhancing public safety and operation effectiveness.
Any questions?
Yes, can you go back to one of the original slides, please?
Which one?
On the liability. The liability. So the main reason that we're bringing this up is because this hasn't been changed since two thousand and eleven, Jerry? Two thousand and eleven, now we need to put something in.
Expired in two thousand and eleven.
It expired in two thousand and eleven. So I'll wait till you go to this. You could never have enough insurance. And I think Ms. Gilbert and I pretty much said that. So where it says, uh, the, I think it was the one before that.
This is the original contract.
Maybe the first one.
These are, these are going to be the new requirements here.
Yeah, it's the same though, the same requirements, correct?
That it was two thousand and eleven, correct? Keep in, keep in mind, when we set, we don't set the insurance rates generally, we send it to the RMA. They make their recommendations, and, and we vetted this through them, and they said that we're, we're covered.
And there has been some increases from the original to the new requirements. As highlighted up there, it's, if you can go back to the...
Yeah, Class A, Class A is fifty, Class B is a hundred, and Class C was two hundred, and now it's one hundred, two hundred, four hundred.
And then up at general liability, they've added an additional two million aggregate. And they've also, the commercial, business, auto liability is increased to two point five million.
All right, so let's start with comments from the public, and then I'll bring it back to the council. Well, no comment tonight, all right. Bring it back to council, yes, Ms. Gilbert?
So you're saying that these rates are what the state deems? I'm a little confused.
No, what I, what I'm saying is...
Well, the insurance portion of it.
Yes, our, our RMA, Risk Management Authority, we, we sent this to them, and they said that these are adequate for what they would recommend. Keep in mind, we're higher than CHP and City of Modesto on what we're requiring for insurance from our companies. They, they have to have affordable insurance to be able to work with us. And if we increase it too much and we run them, run it so high that they can't afford it, we're not going to have people to tow for us, so that puts us in a bad position.
And I have talked to a few of them about that.
I'm agreeing to disagree with you because these are the insurance policies I sell every day, and I see higher insurance from the ones that I sell, and I just think this is a little bit low.
Okay, like I said, we, we contacted City of Modesto to see what they're requiring in CHP. Agency's much larger than Oakdale in what they require, and they require less.
And, and I'm glad that we did bring it up at the last meeting that we discussed this, and I agree, it's too low. However, I have talked to a few different tow companies and said this is the norm, and this would take out every single little guy just trying to keep their head above water with the business. So I, a million, two million, and we have a very strong contract with each one, correct?
Correct.
How many do we have currently? Is it three?
Three.
Three. And then are we looking to have more, or is this going to be, hey, we have our three? Are we good with that, with the...
So this is an open application, as long as, as long as somebody submits the proper paperwork and they qualify, we would put them on our tow rotation list, and they would be eligible to tow for us. Yes, so we're not going to limit the amount.
Okay, but for right now, we only have the three. This right here opens it up, they can submit it, the application process, and then do they have a timeline? So here's a timeline when they do it, or this is just kind of an ongoing thing?
Did we set a timel, did we set a timeline on that? And I'm not sure that we put it in the staff report, but what we would do is we would accept applications with an ending application date. So yes, there would be a deadline. That way we can get into contract with them.
And thank you for checking with other agencies, because we see it as too low, but I get it. Still not happy about the parade having two million, four million, but that's another thing. But thank you for that explanation.
I wish I could help you more with that.
I know, I know, but I understand the risk, I get it. Any other comments, questions from council? All right, this is an action item.
I motion to approve item eleven dot two.
Second.
First and a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie?
Yes.
And Mayor Berry?
Yes, this item passes four oh, thank you, thank you. All right, eleven point three. No, it's okay, it's good. All right, Jerry, is that you?
Yes, that's me, I'm just loading, give me one moment here. Got to unload the rest and then reload this one. All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, sorry about the delay. Item eleven, eleven point three is the Volt Institute Program, supporting workforce development in Oakdale. So before you tonight is the consideration of approving a resolution to authorizing the allocation of twenty-five thousand from Fund Two Forty-Five, which is the economic development, to Opportunity Stanislaus for participation in the Volt Institute Program. Little background on Volt. They were established in two thousand and seventeen by Opportunity Stanislaus. They offer fast-paced training in high-paying, in-demand manufacturing careers, which would highly benefit Oakdale. They've put people through the program, and they, I believe they work at Conagra and some work at Schonza. The key program is the Industrial Maintenance Mechanic, and then additional offerings are Supervisor Development Academy and the Senior Leadership Series that they offer to staff. The purpose is to strengthen the workforce skills and empower Central Valley residents, especially Oakdale residents, and to support our local businesses with a skilled, stable workforce. Program benefits, it addresses local needs. Local manufacturers face challenges finding trained employees. The Volt Institute collaborates with these businesses, develop tailored training programs. The city of Oakdale, twenty-five thousand dollar investment would provide fifty percent discount on Volt programs for Oakdale staff and provide a fifteen thousand dollar credit for a city-administered scholarship program. The scholarship supports residents pursuing high-demand trade, trade skills. This is alternative to college. So administration managed by the staff to select qualified Oakdale residents. Eligibility for the scholarship would be an Oakdale resident, age eighteen, with a high school diploma or GED and a valid photo ID. Minimum work key test scores of four in applied math, graphic literacy, and workplace documents. And that test is done by Opportunity Stanislaus to provide the work score. The impact this twenty-five thousand dollars has is it reduces, reduces the tuition costs for our residents. It enhances access to career training and supports local economic growth. Additional discounts, the training program, the Supervisor Development Academy Retail is twelve hundred, the Oakdale price is five hundred dollars per person. The Senior Leadership Series is five thousand, Oakdale price is twenty-five hundred dollars per person. And it's taught by Christie Marcela, former Gallo, Human Resources Executive, and an Oakdale resident. Other benefits is research reports and human resources recruitments. And those are all free to Oakdale, whereas if we're not a sponsor of the Volt, we'd have to pay a retail of one thousand and twenty-five hundred. So the fiscal impact, funding sources, the economic development account of twenty-five thousand, no impact to the general fund, and the return on the investment is the fifteen thousand in scholarships. And then Opportunity Stanislaus and the Volt program will report to us quarterly. And I just put a graph in here so that you can see what twenty-five thousand gets. We spend the twenty-five thousand and we receive the blue in scholarship credits. So proposed action is to approve the resolution, allocate the twenty-five thousand from Fund Two Forty-Five to Opportunity Stanislaus in support of the Volt Institution project. And, and then staff will establish a scholarship program using the fifteen thousand dollar credit to support Oakdale residents. So the next steps is to city staff to oversee the scholarship administration and coordinate with Volt Institute, and then monitor the program's success through quarterly reports from Volt. And I'll take some questions. Actually, I have Mr. White here from Opportunity Stanislaus and the Volt Institute, and I would like to invite him up. I know he has some brochures that he'd like to hand out to council.
Before, uh, thank you. I just want to make sure, Tom, I do sit on this board, so I want to make sure there's no conflict of interest for me. Okay, thank you, Dave.
Thank you, thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Mayor, and the council staff. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We have a great partnership with the city of Oakdale for many years. And this is a part of our new five-year campaign and plan. We, one of the reasons we can do this is because Volt's been so successful. And it's operating all the time, we have staff there, we, the lights are on. And we're offering this credit as a gesture of gratitude to our investors. So we hope that City of Oakdale will take advantage of that. I want to just share a quick story of a young lady who recently graduated from Volt a couple of years ago. And she was able to get a basic maintenance position and working for a local company. And I just found out today, she got that position, the company sent her back to Volt to get training in our Industry Four Point O training, which is controls and instrumentation, the automation, which is where we're really focusing a lot of our efforts now is on some of these real higher type of manufacturing jobs. And these are the type of jobs that we're going to see in the future, because we're going to see a lot more automation in our local plants. She reported that she got a raise, she qualified for a job, got a raise, sixty dollars an hour.
That's great.
Do you know what that is in annual salary? That's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So she started minimum wage, she came to Volt, got a job making about thirty dollars an hour, stayed with this company for two years, advanced within the company, and just got a promotion, making sixty dollars an hour. So anybody who tells you you can't have a career in manufacturing, that it doesn't pay, it's just, it's just nonsense. And frankly, if you look at all the statistics throughout the country, the trades jobs are going to be the real jobs that people will need to gravitate to because AI is going to replace a lot of jobs in the next twenty to fifty years. And so we really need to support manufacturing especially, support these kind of jobs, and it's going to benefit the city of Oakdale. We've had several students from Oakdale get jobs and working quite well, we have a great relationship with Conagra. I could tell you some things about Conagra, but I don't have permission to do so from the company. But they, we have a tremendous, tremendous relationship with them, with other companies here in Oakdale. And it's been a, and, and this is just the beginning. You'll see in this brochure that we handed out, there's a number of things that we do. We run the Valley Sierra Small Business Development Center, we are the host organization to that. They provide free technical business consulting to small businesses, including many right here in Oakdale. We work with the Chamber and work with the mayor, and on, we do several, we'll do two job fairs each year to support Oakdale and regional businesses, and there's just a whole much more. I could stand here all night, but I know I don't have the time, so. Are there any questions for me at all?
Any questions from the council?
We have a high percentage of our high school students that do not go straight to college, and this program can change each of their lives. So thank you for doing all the work, and I look forward to having a tour there soon.
And by the way, and I mentioned to Kaylee earlier that on Thursday, mark your calendars, we have a special event at Volt Institute. It's our kickoff event for our new five-year plan. You're all invited to come, we have every, we have free food, free drinks. We're going to show you all the new, new toys that we have there, and it's really, if you haven't been there before, it's like going to Willy Wonka's Chocolate Factory only for manufacturing and industry. So we invite you to come, six o'clock at Volt Institute, the former Modesto B Building in downtown Modesto. Thank you.
Dave, thank you and your team for all that you're doing. Any other questions, comments?
Just a quick comment, it's interesting, this came up today, is I, I just had a comment, I'm a full-time professor at Stanislaus State, and I just had a conversation with my students today that college is not for everybody. You would think my job relies on people going to college. But we just had the conversation today that it's not for everybody. So I love seeing this. I developed some industry programs when I was in Merced, working for the probation department. And those are the types of jobs that a good part of our population, that's what they're looking for, and they don't know how to get into it. Having a son who's twenty-one years old, who ended up going to college, I see a lot of his friends, they're wondering what are they going to do with their lives? They're not college, they don't want to go to college, they don't want to go back to school. And I think this is a great opportunity for those late teens, early twenties, or even older to realize, hey, maybe there's an opportunity for not much of a cost, that they can get into an industry that's going to be successful in the future. So thank you for your time and energy.
Thank you. All right, any, oh, sorry.
Appreciate you coming up and talking, and I think this is great. I talked to Jerry about it a lot earlier today, and I grew up in the trades and then went to college, and so I definitely understand, and I have kids that are going to be out of high school soon, and, you know, they don't know exactly what they want to do yet. And, you know, trades are what keeps this country moving, so, hundred percent.
Any comments from the public? All right, thank you, Dave, thank you, Jerry.
I motion to move eleven dot three.
Second that.
First and a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
And Mayor Berry?
Yes, this item passes four oh, thank you.
Thank you.
See you Thursday. All right, item twelve point one.
At twelve point one, so just want to make an announcement here, the special meeting to appoint the new council member has been moved from Monday, November third, at five PM to Wednesday, November twelfth, at five PM. The change works better for some candidates who couldn't make the original date, and it gives everyone a bit more time to prepare for council. However, we have to be cognizant of the sixty, sixty-day window to appoint.
So in November twelfth?
If we don't appoint within sixty days of the resignation, it will spark the special election.
And what date is that, the twenty-fifth?
Seventeenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
So November twelfth, and you'll send us an invite? You'll send us that, it's still five o'clock?
Still at five o'clock, yes.
So November twelfth.
And we're going to notify, we'll put out notification in the Oakdale leader and our social media.
So the updated information will be shared?
Yes, yes.
All right.
And I have nothing more to report.
Okay, thank you. All right, any comments from city council members?
I just have one, just to congratulate Oakdale Football for their win over Central Catholic on Friday night. It's their first victory over Central since two thousand and nineteen, and a great game. If you haven't seen an Oakdale High Football game this year, I strongly, strongly recommend you come to our last regular season home game. It's going to be a rough one against Manteca in two weeks, but I have no doubt that Oakdale will have a home playoff game. They're doing wonderful this year, they're seven and one. They have one loss, having a great year, so it's fun to see the kids being successful.
I'm with the band, and the band was just recently in Santa Cruz, and Iska Rangel took first place in Mace for drum major. Our color guard won second in their division. The band won second, and last but not least, the drum line won sweepskates and pers, and persca, and percussion. the band won second, and last but not least, the drum line won sweepskates and pers- and percu- and percussion. All the kids' hard work and dedication, along with their outstanding coaches, Ross McGinnis, Luis Cruz, and Taylor Nardello, and support coaches, so, let's go Mustangs.
Good job, anything else? All right, just remember Veterans Day, November eleventh, parade, ceremony, and lunch. Meet us at the FES Hall for lineup at nine AM, parade starts at ten, ceremony and lunch will start right about eleven. Everybody's welcome to join us, if you don't have a float, you're welcome to join us on the council float, with Hummer trucking and driving us. Uh, with that, we'll see everybody on November third, have a great few weeks, have a safe and sane Halloween, and thank you guys for being here, meeting adjourned.